Good evening. It is Monday, August 28th, and I call the Maple Plain City Council Meeting to order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing that, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Broda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Carter Brandt, I invite you forward to the microphone to present your Eagle Scout project.
Right there.
Right there, sorry.
Neat. So, my name is Carter Brandt. I'm about a seventh year Boy Scouts with Troop 206, which is based out over in Orno. And I have a proposal for an Eagle Scout project that some of you heard last week, roughly, about over at our own Bryanwood Park over in neighborhoods over there. Now, I live right next there. I've been living there for about three years, and there's been a lot of new families coming in, and it's a good park, but I've seen it's kind of getting there, it's starting to decay and need some work on, so I'm here to propose a Eagle Scout project with included budget plan on how to refurbish the park. I have two packets here, if you guys would like me to pass it around.
We have copies.
All right.
Thank you, Carter.
Neat. That makes my life easier. So, on the first page, there's basically a brief history of me, and then what, and then on the, right here is what's my ideas and why I plan to do with the park. Would you guys like to read that over? Me and my mom, we're not too good at drawing, but we did make a rough sketch of the outline of the section of the park we want to go, we want to work on. So, how Bryanwood kind of looks is, there's kind of this little pathway going through, and then there's two sections of the park. There is an old section that has, well, I consider the older part of the park, so it still has like the gravel down, it has the old metal slide, and there's a swing set. And then there's the other side of the park, which has a much newer play area for the, for the younglings. My plan is that I'd like to, there's this wooden border around, on the left part, the older part, there's this wooden border that goes around from these giant railroad ties that keeps all the peat gravel in, or wood chips. And it getting pretty rotten. One of my ideas for this Eagle project is would, to be, to replace those ties, dig them up. I was just out there yesterday, and I was checking out, and I could step on it, and my foot was squished into the ground when I stepped on a tie. That's not supposed to happen, so. And it could become a hazard for younger kids who will run by and get their foot stuck on rotting wood. It's happened to me when I was younger. It's not fun. And if you look a couple pages through, on this page, you can tell that it's really starting to get rotten. And another thing is, it's sunk down into the ground that allows the grass and the peat to just move all over the place, and just makes a mess of everything. So that would be a big improvement on the park. Another part of my Eagle project would be, is to add two new benches to the park, all right? And how I would like to do it, there's two corners on the, on the park. There's one going like this, and it's kind, it's kind of like a square, but it's not. It's like weird square. I have like a rough drawing of it. And if you, and it says it on there, the two locations of it. So, this is that path I was talking about, you know? You walk down the park, you know, you see the two slides and stuff. And then there's the swing set area, and then there's the old metal slide right here. I propose that we make two new benches right here and right here, so you can be, so mothers can sit down, because there's only about three benches there. There's one over by, there's a brand new one over by the newer park area. There's a really old rotten one that's like falling apart, which I'll get to in a minute, on the, over yonder on the other part of the park. And then, where's the last one? The last one's a little peat, little peat, uh, wood, uh, bench. It's just old kind of moss covered, and it's, it's pretty small, and it's about right there, all right? And that's a trail. Well, I propose this, with these two benches, they're kind of like a right angle looking, so you can sit down, and you get a full view of the park, like this, so you have like the swing set, the slide and everything, so when your parents watch your kids, they can sit down, and they have a full view of range, the sea, you know? And then you have one on the other side, so you know, kind of going back and forth, you know? And just make the park look a lot nicer. My mom, courtesy of my mom, she put a picture in there of an idea of similar of what we would kind of want it to look like in the end.
Carter, did you have an extra set of those pictures? We didn't get those. If you have one of those, maybe we can...
We'll share.
Yeah, we'll look at it, we'll pass it around.
My apologies. We have the proposal in writing in the...
Yeah, here.
Thank you.
But, so, and then, so we already, me and my dad, and my dad works in construction, so we've already kind of figured out what the rough estimate of how much wood and what the materials we're gonna need to build this, build these is, and kind of roughly the man hours on how to build them. But I think if we can, if you guys let me do this, which would be great, um, I think the park would much improve with having these new benches and the new ties around it, because it just, one, it looks better, it's safer for the younglings, because, and it's just, it reflects on our city better when people, when people move in here. Like, I've noticed, there's a lot of new families, a lot of young kids are going through that park, and it just reflects a lot better on the city, having, you know, brand new ties, new benches and all that. Just, it just makes a whole lot of difference. So, early in my presentation, I was talking about this peat, uh, peat, this is the type of wood, it's called, it's like peat or teat? Yeah, teat? Yeah, teak. Anyways, teat wood, which is a very, very expensive wood. And I checked it out, and it's, it's still good. It looks kind of rotten in this picture and what you'll see, but, um, a quick sanding and then re, like a staining would make all the difference, and it's still a good bench, and it's expensive, too. So, if we can give it more years of it, would be great. And once again, it looks better, reflects better on the park and on the city. And then my mom came up with this idea, and I was talking about this old bench here, just I, you can't even sit on it, because it's so, the wood's so rotten. Someone did tell me that they're planning on replacing that wood soon. Um, but what, my mom had this idea of making a, like a dog parking area, a bench that you can hook your dog leashes onto, so your dogs, they're not running around in the park, and you're not tying it to a tree, you know? So there's a spot, so you know, so it's like a bench, but yet you can hook your leash up to it, so you know, you got somewhere for your dog to be in. There, um, it would be something like this, with like a hooks around it, so you can just hook your leash up to it, you know? Which I think would be pretty cool. So, on the very back page on the ones that you guys should have gotten, and then on like the second page of the one I just passed out, I have the budget right here. So, so, when me and my dad first went out there, we checked if, um, we, my dad, when we did the math, we, we did for double the ties in the ground that makes up the border. We did double, just in case, because we thought there's a tie on, under a tie, and we checked out there, oh wow, that got loud. We checked out there, and thankfully, we managed to cut the price of what we originally had, and I could tell you the original price, but you'd be like, ah, that's way too much money. But we managed to cut the price in half for that, so just to build the, just the border would be about, uh, about roughly a little bit under a thousand dollars, because this is green tree wood, which will last a pretty long time. And these are like, they're about yeet thick, about yeet wide, and they're like six to eight feet long, and that's what makes up the border. Each one's a little bit different, because you need to build out the shapes and stuff. But for the entire perimeter of the entire, that part of the park would cost a little bit under a thousand dollars in total to build, and then for, and for the supplies, you know? And then the, each bench would cost about two hundred dollars roughly, for the wood and like the screws and the supplies and stuff. And then, if you look on there, it says table one, table two. See, um, how we have it planned is, there's two benches that make up one, like that, and then there's the small table that you have right in there. That's, that's separate from the two benches. That's why we have table one, table two there. So, and each of the tables costs about seventy-six dollars roughly to build. And then, me and my dad, we, we went over the ideas, just like, okay, how are we gonna put this in the ground, and so it won't fall over? And we came up with a couple ideas with concrete, or we could just dig it in. And I do have the price of concrete in there, but that's, that's a lot of money, and it's kind of, and it's just kind of a lot of hard work, but it's up to you guys, if you allow me, if you allow me to do this. It's up to you guys if you would like to use concrete or not. And then, we did talk about adaptive swing, which there is a picture of, which, they have one of them over here. It's for, uh, it's adaptive swing. I don't know how else to explain it. But it just allows for, it's easier for people to swing in and stuff. It's, we do have the, I did do a separate price, because it's, it's not really, like, when I made this plan, I thought for, oh, we're the, only I have like the materials and stuff, but I, I did make a separate total for the price of without it and the price with it, which makes a bit of a difference. But this is what she was talking about. It's one of those, it's a much larger swing that you can clip people in if they're younger, because, um, and what the plan was with the swing set, there is three normal swings, and there's three bucket swings, I think they're called, for infants. And then you just take away one of the bucket swings, and you add this, and I think it'll just be a lot better, and allows so more people can use the park. Any questions so far? No? Okay. That's good.
We have a question from Councilmember DeLuca.
Why don't you finish, and then I'll ask the questions.
All right. So, if, when we get there, the plan, we have, we made up four different ideas for laying concrete, which I don't think we should, we should do, because it's a lot of work and it's a lot, a lot of money. So, if you can look at that on the packet, and just tell, give me some advice on it. And then finally, my mom said if we have any extra materials, this is the, uh, the sign leaning to Bradwood Park. Just to make it easier, we would think about making this a small little border, and I have a neighbor, including myself, would donate some plants, like some hosters or something, something really rugged but nice looking, put in there, just so it's easier to mow around, looks, looks nicer. Estimated start time would start on about September 8th, 2017, and then completion date estimate would be October 8th. So about a month. And it'll be nice, because there'll be some time left in the year, so people can still use the park, but we won't be dragging on until spring. And so, which will be nice, that, you know? And I think that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Carter. Councilmember DeLuca, we'll start with you.
Let me start, Carter, by saying thank you. Being a potential Eagle Scout is a huge accomplishment. My son was one, and I believe Julie's son is also an Eagle Scout. It's not a small undertaking, so congratulations to you for that.
Thank you.
As part of your Eagle Scout project, have you gotten preliminary approval from your troop?
I'm actually about to ask that right after this meeting. It's a, I have worked at many Eagle projects. I got a very, very, very unlikely to say no on this, because I've seen a lot of people get away with a lot less than this, because this is a lot.
I get your point. Secondly, as part of an Eagle Scout program, you, you have to come up with a plan to involve the community and your fellow scouts. Do you have a plan for how you're going to involve volunteer labor in this?
Well, I have, I come from a very big troop, or one of the bigger troops in the district, and there's a lot of younger scouts in my troop. And when you, when you work at how Eagle projects work, how, a nice system what they have in place is that you can get something called service hours towards another rank for working on an Eagle project. So that's a very big motivator for a lot of younger scouts to help work. And then, I have a lot of friends in the troop, and then out of the troop, and then my neighbor, she already volunteered the help out on this, and I have a lot of people who would like to help out on this, who I've known for a very long time. But there's a lot of people in my troop who would be willing to help. I've already asked around about it.
Okay. Thank you. And then third, and finally, as part of an Eagle project, you need to have a articulated budget, which you've got.
Yes.
And a, and a fundraising strategy. Do you have a fundraising strategy to secure these dollars?
Not yet. I was hoping for the city or the park service to help pay for it, but if I need to, I'll find a way to get a fundraising stra, strategy.
Funding for a project like this, Carter, would typically come out of the park's budget, or part of it, as that is their budget, so it's their discretion. So we, as a council, are not able to do that. We don't want to take that away from the Parks Commission.
All right.
So, just so you know, from the city financial side, the steps.
And I just, I also want to congratulate you on this step, and as we spoke, you know, I'm an Eagle Scout myself, and I went through this process, and I remember trying to figure out what to do. So I'm glad that you're able to have something right in your backyard, essentially, that will benefit the community. My suggestion, you kind of hit the nail on the head. A lot of Eagle Scouts have done a lot less than that, which means, you know, you could be doing a really big project here. And so if you're in the point where funding might be an issue, maybe, maybe pick two or three things from this that you're really passionate about, and it's gonna make the most impact.
Yeah.
And run with that. It, it just could be a little bit big. I'd love to see it all done, because these are all great ideas. But when those things kind of shake out, I just encourage you maybe hone in a bit, so.
And that's a lot of work.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I know.
When's your 18th birthday, Carter?
Uh, I'm 16. I turn 17 this November, so a couple more years.
Time's on your side, because you have to work in it.
Which is nice.
Good job. Any other questions or comment for Life Scout Carter Brandt? Well, thank you for your presentation and for wanting to make our parks a better place to be, and good luck in the process, and let us know on how we can be of support in the journey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carter.
Hi, that was great, thanks.
You as well. All right. With that, we are moving on to number six, consent agenda.
Can I ask that accounts payable be pulled to ask a few questions?
Yes, we can pull accounts payable. Anything else need, anyone want pulled? Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus letter A, accounts payable.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda has passed. Do you want to, let's do accounts payable now, instead of other business.
Alpha video and audio, it looks like, the way it's written, Bobby, is there some equipment repair?
Yeah.
Did we not sign a maintenance contract with this company?
We did. No, not like a maintenance contract, no. We bought some equipment from them. We had them under warranty on some items, but we had some issues with like a microphone here that needed to be repaired. That was part of it. Some of it's labor hours that came out as well. And then they didn't charge us for parts, but we had a issue on our Matrox box as well. They kind of came out and hit all three of those in one deal. We have a warranty on the Matrox box, so I, we didn't get charged for the, like, parts of that, but we got charged for some of the labor time involved with that. So that's why that bill's worth.
So no maintenance agreement, but things are under warranty?
Correct. That's why they, they came out specifically.
Okay.
Yep.
Last month, when we were discussing the WeCan donation, we had a great deal of discussion over, uh, the Delano Senior Center. And my recollection was that they don't ask for donations, they bill.
Correct.
And we were going, I thought we were going to invite a representative from the Delano Senior Center to come out to explain to us exactly what it is that we're paying for, how many residents in Maple Plain are utilizing it, et cetera, et cetera. Yet I see we're paying forty, forty-four hundred thirty-three dollars.
Yes, correct. So we, we did get the bill. I still fully intend on, on having a representative come out. We can certainly pull that if council would like to wait until we hear something from a representative before paying that as well. It could go either way.
I would make that recommendation.
Okay. Councilmember Fay would like to pull pain in the Delano Senior Center until we have a representative come out and speak. The bill is approximately forty-three hundred dollars. I don't have it right.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Okay, thank you. Any other feedback from council? Our direction? We in favor? Everyone in agreement with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So we will pull that until a representative is able to come out.
Sure.
Thank you.
One more item would be, I see the cleaning of the interior and exterior water tower has been completed.
Correct.
Did they supply us with either video or...
Yes, I believe so.
...notation as far as what they found?
Yes, I believe so.
Anything we have to be concerned about?
Uh, not that I've been broadly aware of it at this time, no. So then we will get on a cycle with doing that.
Correct.
You know, seven years or so.
And then...
Possibly longer.
In plannings invoice, there is three hundred and forty dollars for the 2040 comp plan.
Correct.
Are we paying for that, or is that coming out of the Met Council?
That'll be coming out of the Met Council. We get reimbursed for all those services.
Okay.
Yep. We actually already have the money, so.
And garage doors at Public Works, old, damaged?
Oh, yeah. They needed to be replaced. That was in really bad shape, those were.
Coming out of capital improvement?
Nope. That'll come out of their maintenance.
They're, okay.
Yep.
That's all I had for questions on accounts payable.
I had two maintenance questions, Bobby.
Yep.
Why was it necessary to have pest control outsourced for wasps at the park?
Um, okay, this is gonna sound really weird, but these wasps were...
Mean?
No. They're not your standard wasp. These things are like four inches long. They're in, they were burrowing a ton of holes in Rainbow Park around different areas, but they weren't like your standard wasp by any stretch. And the pests, the chemicals that we had to do some of that does not touch this specific type of wasp. I've actually got one in a jar. They look pretty, they look pretty intense, so I'm not gonna lie on that. So, it was contracted out because we didn't have the chemicals to kill them with this specific wasp.
And they were in the ground, you said?
Yes, they burrowed holes in the ground.
So is there something we can do to be proactive about that then next year?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I haven't noticed it as like a trend from last year to this year, or something like that. But, yeah, this was kind of an odd anomaly in that, in that regard. I haven't noticed it as a pattern by any stretch.
And then where's the weed control being done for the prolong?
Yeah, so, um, that's being done in, I know our Northside Park gets a lot of that treatment. Uh, I believe the baseball field gets some of that, I believe. It's a, it's a contract agreement that we've had, we had with them last year as well. I can give you more specifics on all the areas that that touches, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding accounts payable? Okay, with that, looking for a motion to approve the accounts payable with, with pulling pain in the Delano Senior Center at this time?
So moved.
Moved by Broda.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item number seven, administrative reports. This time, we'll turn it over to our city engineer, Dan Boyham, for his August report.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council, some of the various activities that we worked on this last month include preparing for a public gathering and council meeting discussions on Bud Avenue. Improvements, also putting together information for the assessment hearing that will be talked about later tonight. We also prepared contracts and attended the pre-construction meeting and reviewed some initial shop drawings for the well number four connection project, which is starting. We put together quote package information and, and talked with contractors on the Parkview Road Drain Cell and Maple Ridge Drive Settlement Project. That'll be another agenda item later tonight that we'll talk about. Put together some various figure drawings and spreadsheets for the capital improvement plan that the council is looking at and working with staff and ourselves on, and implementing. The 2017 seal coat, we prepared a quote package, and that construction work was originally scheduled for the 28th, and then with the weather in the last few weeks, they said the 29th, and as of today, they said it actually will be this Wednesday. And we know there's good weather now this whole week, right, right, team?
We'll go with that, Dan.
We don't have a meteorologist on staff, but we'll send positive vibes.
Yeah.
I'll check my phone.
Okay. So that seal coating will be scheduled for August 30th. And, yeah, variety of different things, so I can answer any questions the council has at this time.
Any questions for engineer? Thank you for those roadmap reports that you gave us earlier. Looking for a motion to approve the city engineer August monthly report.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion.
All right. With that, we'll move on to our city planner, August monthly report.
Thank you, honorable mayor, city council. During the month of August, we had a series of staff meetings, our regular weekly meeting. We had a couple of items on the docket that we talked about. One is a concept sketch that I've been presented with, not an official application, but I believe that is forthcoming on 1675 Spring Avenue. That would be good if we could get that, get that in its proposal for multi-family on that particular property. And I think it would, I think it would fit into the city's guiding as it relates to the comprehensive plan, also the downtown design guidelines for that particular property. So hopefully, we see something come forward with that. Outside of that, I've worked on the, the Gateway District redevelopment that we've talked about as a staff and with the property owner of that particular property. We've had several meetings on that over the last couple of months, and we had another meeting in the last month to continue dialogue on that redevelopment proposal. I have had additional questions on the Baker Park Road property, which is 1425. Just people looking, I mean, people are pretty active right now looking for development opportunities in that area. City staff and I, Bobby and I, met with a couple of our conditional use permit holders in the city to talk about how we could bring their CUPs into compliance. So we had a meeting out at the former Alcona property, talking about that. And I think we've gotten, we took a tour of that building. Actually, a lot of work has been done on the inside of that, and we strongly encouraged the owner to complete the exterior work on that. And he is in the process and is working to get us some, some timeframes still this year, hopefully to finish the CUP work. So hopefully we'll see that. And then we also have had just some nuisance complaints, and we've, I've had a meeting with a property owner off of Marsh, talking about a violation of the city's ordinance relating to the signage and, and items, miscellaneous items that they have strewn about the property, and we're working on trying to resolve that issue. Couple of calls on just some properties for sale. There's a couple of properties downtown. One on Main Street that's been getting a lot of calls now, where there's an existing auto repair business, just people inquiring what can be used for that particular property. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the planning report.
Questions for our planner? Looking for a motion to approve the city planner August monthly report.
So moved.
Moved by Fay.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be our West Hennepin Public Safety Report for the, for July.
Honorable mayor and council members, including in your packet before you is the activity report for our police department through July 2017. In total, we've handled 4,650 incidents, 1,868 of them in Maple Plain. And in the month of July, we handled 281 incidents in Maple Plain and 472 in Independence. And as you look at the charts, we try to compare compared to this month last year. Actually, July was pretty stable. We were actually a few ICRs or incidents underneath. So, we've kind of stabled out, and, and I think that's a good thing. That means that people are being more responsible, less calls, they, they're following the rules. So, just to highlight a few cases, on July 7th, we were called to 1800 Block and Newport Street in Maple Plain on a civil matter. Apparently, a Chaska resident purchased a grinder, I'm gonna assume it's a meat grinder, not a marijuana grinder, from this resident through Craigslist, and he didn't check to see if their grinder worked before he bought it. So then he gets home to Chaska, calls us and says, hey, it doesn't work, the person won't answer their phone, I just want to make sure that it wasn't stolen. So obviously, we can't do anything. So obviously, we can't do anything as far as a civil matter of the sale between the two, but we did check and make sure that it wasn't stolen for that person. On, uh, July 14th, we had a drug possession case on the early morning hours. On July 14th, the Highway 12 and Conroe 83 in Maple Plain just simply stopped a car for headlight out. Twenty-year-old, twenty-one-year-old male from Delano knew he had the headlight out, but was still in possession of a plastic baggie with marijuana, a glass smoking device, and two other grinders used to grind up the marijuana and to smoke it. On this particular day and age, those are just citable offenses for possession of drug paraphernalia, so he was cited and released, was not smoking marijuana at that time. On July 16th and 18th, we did have some late evening calls on the fifty-eight hundred block of Maple Plain and on Main Street in Maple Plain. On the 16th, we got a disturbance of a, they thought two people were arguing or maybe into a domestic dispute. It turned out that the male was just simply outside of his home, speaking really loudly on his cellphone, swearing and cussing whoever he was talking to. So he told the person to, you know, take it inside, neighbors are complaining. Couple of days later, 1:05 a.m., this male party called, uh, the police department in regards to a dispute he was having with his mom. Apparently, he had a bail refund check from getting arrested, that he posted bail. And, uh, and it was sent to his mother's address and not his. And he was trying to arrange for pickup for him to get his check. His mom and him got into argument. She refused him to come over to her house to get the check, so he called the police to see what we could do to get his bail refund check back for him. After speaking with him for some time, um, we asked if there was a third party that could transact this check between him, his mom and himself. And he found his sister that was able to do that and handle it. I don't know, that 1:05 a.m., uh, in the morning is probably the right time to call the police to dispute over a, a check between your mom. But we, we get all kinds of calls, and so we, we handled that one. Uh, July 19th, we did have some damage to property at Northside Park here in Maple Plain. Um, the park itself wasn't burned or the building, but we did find a briefcase, Public Works found a briefcase or the remains of a briefcase that had been kind of put on the concrete there and somebody thought, uh, to, to light it on fire. So, uh, case is under investigation. At this point, we don't have any leads, but it, it's alarming anytime you see people burn towards public property or your parks, uh, 'cause that can lead to arson. So if anybody has any information on, uh, or any leads on anybody starting fires or anything around our park, to give us a call. Uh, July 24th, we did have a fourth-degree DWI arrest at ten twenty-three p.m., Highway 12 and Main Street. Uh, this person was having some issues crossing over Highway 12, uh, from Main Street and was eventually stopped for those violations and tested a point one oh alcohol concentration after that. Um, what's interesting about that as well is that, um, he had a concealed weapon, uh, while under the influence. So they did have a permit to carry with a concealed weapon while they're intoxicated driving their vehicles. So obviously, that's a concern to us. It's not against the law to, to have a conceal and carry permit. We just ask that you not be intoxicated and driving cars when you're doing that, so. The 25th of July, we did have the old day distributing building. The south side of it faces the railroad tracks, and somebody, um, went on that south side of that building and did what I would call train, train graffiti. Did some multicolored spray painting, um, of that building on the backside. And again, we don't know if that's local or if somebody was, uh, on the train traveling back and forth, but it, it's the typical bubble-style graffiti that you see on trains. And so, again, if everybody has any, uh, leads, please let us know. And then this last one, I just bring to kind of our citizens' attention, uh, for two reasons. One's just so they're aware of it, and number two, if they see police officers taking down these signs, they know. Probably over the last two months, most of us have probably noticed these very large orange signs that say "Missing Dog" or "Lost Dog." And they're at most of our common intersections within our area. It was brought to our attention that the dogs actually aren't missing from this area, and it's actually a rescue group out of Woodbury and Oakdale and East Metro. And, uh, the person that called felt that they were being, uh, uh, trying to get them to donate or to help with the organization of these dogs. So, um, we asked them many times to remove the signs. They haven't. I saw one today at County Road 110 and 151 in Minatrista. So they know that the signs aren't any lost dogs here. So what we've done is they're a nuisance sign, uh, they're distracting, and they're not dogs from around here. So we've been removing the signs as we see them in Maple Plain or Independence. Of course, they don't come pick up the signs, so we dispose of them. I just want you guys to know that the cops, if you see them taking down a sign, it isn't some kid's lost dog sign and then we're being mean about the fact that we're taking it down. They're just not from around here, and there's no likelihood that a dog from Oakdale or Woodbury is going to end up in Maple Plain. At least that's my opinion on that. So, uh, we've asked them to remove them. But having said that, uh, there's obviously many other cases. I like to highlight the ones in Maple Plain. If you have any questions, I can answer them for you. Uh, otherwise, that's the activity report for July.
Any questions for the chief? All right, with that, looking for a motion to accept the July West Hennepin Public Safety Police Report?
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Broda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, city administration, August monthly report?
Uh, can I jump to Public Works on that one?
Sure.
All right, perfect. Uh, just a few things, uh, Public Works has been busy, uh, this last month. Obviously, we've been doing a lot of work, um, for well four connection to the water treatment plant happening. Uh, Public Works has been busy with some of those preparations. Uh, they're storing some material, but also working with some of the seal coating contractors on some of those selected roads. Matt and Harry have repaired a security fence at the shop. Uh, this will limit unwanted traffic to the back of the shop area. They've been talking to local trucking and, uh, trucking and excavators to get quotes of removing Northside Park's BMX track. That will be done in-house, um, when that happens. Uh, repaired, uh, alleyway Bud Main Street by regrading material to help with some drainage that we had at Bud and Main Street. Been working on the compost site, um, and keeping to, uh, remove and flip some of the materials to keep that, uh, progressing. Prepping for some tree servicing, uh, by putting together a chip box on their dump truck, so that we've got to do some right-of-way tree maintenance. Address some weed issues along Bud Avenue in Manchester. And then also we'll be adding some material, um, along the road to help with mowing, 'cause of the, um, it's not necessarily the most level area. Uh, they've also been doing some work along the water treatment plant, their building. They've done a lot of, uh, uh, maintenance around that building as well. Uh, they've been planning, um, equip, equipment demolition along the city of Independence. And, uh, the Orno Discovery Center, they have a, um, a demolition for like, a demo for the kids. And they, uh, usually bring a plow truck and, uh, some other, um, Public Works vehicles just for the kids to look at. It's a really cool deal. And then also, um, obviously, as I mentioned before, uh, they helped with some of the B issues at Rainbow Park, uh, as well. So, um, that's what Public Works has been up to. I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, at this time.
Any questions for administrator regarding the Public Works report?
Just a comment.
Yep.
And maybe I should go on an agenda for a workshop, but we really do need to address a long-term plan for the compost site.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other comments or questions? Looking for a motion to accept the Public Works August monthly report?
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, now we will do the city administration August report.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council. Uh, staff is, uh, administration, administrative staff has been busy the last month, uh, attending a variety of community public meetings. Uh, staff has been continuing to work on fire department personnel policies. Uh, you'll see tonight on the agenda, we have our last three policies in front of you. Staff has been working on multiple economic development opportunities. I believe our city planner mentioned a few, uh, of those in the Gateway District. Also, uh, we'll be getting more on downtown at our next EDA meeting on September 5th at 7:00 p.m. Uh, staff is finishing up, uh, the 2018 city budget. Staff is looking at changing, uh, website providers to enhance our city website. Uh, staff has met with, uh, some, um, conditional use, uh, permit property owners and shared, uh, the city expectation of compliance. Uh, staff, um, is, uh, well, we're actually just wrapping up sending out the community survey for the 2040 comprehensive plan. So that has not officially gone in the mail yet, but, uh, we've got all the labels on envelopes and putting the pre-postage on and everything. That is all covered, those dollars, by our grant dollars that we have from Met Council as well. So, um, those are just a few of the things that administration's been working on this month, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And the comp plan survey, that's gonna be available on the website as well, too, correct?
Correct, yep, we're gonna, we're gonna put that, um, put that on the website for sure.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments for the city administration August monthly report? All right. Looking for a motion to approve the city administration August monthly report?
So moved.
Moved by Broda.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Having no old business? Correct?
Correct.
All right, we will move on to our public hearing, Bud Avenue Assessment Hearing.
Thank you, mayor and city council. I'm actually gonna pass this over to our, uh, city engineer, Dan Boyham, to kind of give a rundown of the project again. And then, uh, and then, I know that there's some residents here that would be happy to speak on the project as well, um, at that time, so.
Do you want Dominic and I to move?
At this time, council member Cahill and council member Broda will be abstaining from the discussion as they are personally involved with the project. And they will physically be moving to the audience side of the council table. And I will turn it over to staff.
Sure, thank you, mayor. Yeah, it's a pleasure to see many of you again. I know we saw, um, several of you on the public gathering meeting that the council held on July 25th. And so tonight, we're gonna talk about, give a project update on the project, run through the costs, run through the special benefit analysis that was done since the November, um, hearing with the public. We're gonna also review interest rates, terms of assessment and proposed assessment role, and then run through some questions that the public has. And once again, the council, this is the assessment hearing tonight, but the council is not planning to make a final decision tonight. They're wanting to get, um, feedback again from the public. And I think the plan will be at your September, um, 25th meeting to make a final decision, decision on the role. So project update, um, the contractor has completed punch list items. He, he paved the final lift of asphalt and did striping work. Um, we do anticipate, um, processing the final payment request to the contractor in September. And, and just one thing for the public, it was brought up at the public gathering, the city is looking and talking with Excel on the power sources for electronic speed signs. Um, the plan would be to put one, um, kind of in the park area for northbound Bud Avenue traffic. I think very close to the location that the West Hennepin had placed a temporary digital speed sign. Um, also putting one right south of the apartment complex at the north end for southbound traffic. The total project costs were one million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, and that included the utility work. That's the sewer and water, there are street and storm sewer improvements, the sidewalk improvements, as well as streetlight improvements. A special benefit analysis, some additional ones were done following the November 2006 hearing. Those, um, were used by the, um, staff and, and council in reviewing the proposed assessment role for tonight. Um, there was some adjustments that were made based on those, um, special benefit analysis reports that were, um, completed this winter-spring. And the city council once again considered, um, comments that were raised at that July 25th public gathering, um, to set the, the improvements or the proposed assessments that we'll show on the next page. And, and I think that was very good feedback. We appreciated those comments, um, that the public had at that public gathering. Um, this is the proposed assessment role. I think that there's a copy when you came in for, um, people to grab, but, um, this is what the council is presenting tonight and what was included in your notices that came out to, um, each property owner. Um, the interest rates that are being proposed is at 3.8%. The terms of the assessment would be over 20 years. Um, you can pay off the assessment within 30 days after the council adopts the role with no interest. And assuming that adoption is made at the September 25th meeting, then you have 30 days from that meeting. Um, a final assessment role is generally sent to the county by November 30th. That's a deadline that the city needs to, um, um, follow. They, they can send it sooner than that day, but for sure by November 30th. The staff will update the council, excuse me, the county on any, um, payments that property owners have made prior to, um, um, in late December, early January, so that the county knows this is what is actually gonna be put on people's, um, property payments for the assessments. And the first payment is due, um, in 2018. And, and that's kind of a quick run-through. I know, uh, many of you have, um, seen some of this at, at that public gathering. But once again, the council plans to, um, make it a final decision at their September 25th meeting. So now we'll open up to questions and participation, as, as the city administrator mentioned, is encouraged. If you can introduce yourself and your address, um, that would be great. And, and in general, directing questions to the mayor and council, and the mayor and council will direct staff for any clarification, um, on those questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to the public for any questions.
Thank you, engineer Dan. Before we do that, we do need to, um, open our public hearing. So I'm looking for a motion to open our public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing and the assessment.
Open, second?
Second.
Okay. With that, the public hearing is open. And just a reminder, um, that we will have three minutes and council, we will not be able to interact. We are here to listen and, um, give staff direction. So with that, um, the podium is open.
Caitlin Cahill, 1775 Bud. Well, I thank the council for the improvements to Northside Park. I'm here to formally object the amount of the special assessment on my property as it significantly exceeds the special benefit. I believe a $7,000 assessment is more accurate. Though I continue to believe that the $10,000 cap is too high for the street as a whole, um, today I will speak specifically to the things that adjust on my property. Um, for starters, properties with similar frontage on the main Rainbow Road Improvement Project were assessed significantly less. Um, ones similar to mine were assessed in the six to eight thousand range. For example, 5625 Main Street West had the exact 75 feet of frontage, but was assessed 6,550, which is 34% less than mine. Additionally, if you want to rely on the appraisal done by the city contractor, and I've raised issues with it previously, but if you want to depend on it, he outlines nine categories that affected our properties as, on the project as a whole. However, two of these categories do not apply to my house specifically, or at least not in full. The first of all is the functional design of the road due to the placement of the crosswalks. The corner pedestrian crosswalks are notoriously dangerous, um, as the city knows, as you place a hawk crosswalk down the road instead of at a corner due to safety concerns. And yet, not one, but two were placed pointing to the same corner on my property. This creates a significant hazard when backing out of my driveway, as I have to watch for six-point of traffics between pedestrians and automobiles. This is especially apparent during rush hour with traffic to and from the business district down Manchester and school traffic and kids going to the park. The crosswalks, um, plus the new streetlight also increase pedestrian traffic noise at all hours of the night, um, as my dogs remind me, which is both a noise nuisance and a safety issue. Both these factors have decreased the value of my home and therefore the special benefit of the project. The second category are the storm sewers. Though Bud itself was largely lacking storm sewers before the project, I had four storm sewers within 30 feet of my project previous to construction. Though one was added across the street, one was also removed in order to make room for the church parking lot. And so there was a net difference in storm sewers. Additionally, due to the slope of the road, most storm water goes to the existing unimproved drain on Manchester. This drain also has a culvert in my backyard, and as such, when my sump pump was installed, it was configured to empty out the back of the house to this storm drain. Therefore, I received no special benefit from the tie-in in the front yard, um, as many residents may have, as mine was already configured to drain to the city storm sewer in the back. Based on special assessments previously appealed in Minnesota, previously existing resources such as these drains are the main reason they often approve a decrease because they provide no special benefit. And last, or let's see, make sure. And last but not least, lest you worry about precedent for other properties or future projects, um, keep in mind that a special assessment is specific to one property, and these factors are specific to mine. So I'm asking for a more accurate amount of $7,000 instead of 10. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cahill. Thank you, Ms. Cahill.
Name is Dominic Broda, and I'm representing the church, so I'll just hop across the street from Caitlin, and just wanna, you know, first, thank you for the work you did on the, on the road, it is a big improvement, but the big issue I have is with our 1839 property, and I'm gonna raise a few points that I've already raised, the 1839 property is a residential property, and always has been, it was there before the construction of the church, but by these assessments, it's being assessed nearly $28,000, because you're assessing it on the highest and best use of its zoning. Now, all I'm asking for, and I know you can't give me an answer, but I haven't found one, is, is how this is consistent with the other assessments, especially the other residential assessments on the street. There are two other homes that are, that are zoned and residential three as well, that are getting the, the residential cap of $10,000, and all the other residents are mixed use, which could be developed at some point into a strip mall, or condos, or, you know, they have that, that capability to piggyback off of the downtown development. I'm not advocating for higher assessments for anyone else, I just want an answer on where the consistency is here. And now, the first assessment that was given to 1839 was just shy of $16,000, and I believe they came to that assessment because they viewed it as a residential property. Fast forward several months later into the winter of 2016, spring of 2017, they said the special benefits are now $40,000. Now, that's quite the increase, and the only way I can see that is that they are not looking at it as a residential property, but as a future apartment building, which makes no sense to the church, since we have no, we have no plans to do that. So all, all I'm asking is that this would be viewed fairly for what it is, a residential property, and in one breath, you're saying it doesn't matter what it is now, we're assessing on what it could be. Now, on the other side, the only explanation I've had of why it's not seen as a residential, I've heard comments that we have church gatherings out on the lawn, that happens about three days a year, and always upon the request for permission from whoever's living in that house, which traditionally has been low-income families, we've had a homeless family living there for a couple of days, and we're looking at another low-income family with hardship to live there rent-free. So all I'm asking is that we look at 1839 as a residential property, that you give it the same benefits, you can walk right down the road and look at the house that's there, there's not $40,000 worth of improvements, there's not $28,000 worth of improvements, there's not even $10,000 worth of improvements that's being done to the property that's actually on those premises, and if you go down the theoretical route of what it could be, I just ask that you stay consistent, not only on the other houses on this, on this project, but also in all future projects and the zoning that they're given. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broda, and we will direct staff to answer, to work with you and to answer your questions.
And I was gonna bring up, there was one question before the meeting, Bobby, that one of the residents brought up, and they, they asked if staff could bring that up, and I don't know if you wanted to hit on that, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, so the, the question was on, in, in the notice, there is a ordinance that the city has related to 60?
Yes, yeah, there is a state statute out there, and this is an option for city council to act on, and that is, is that if you were 65 years of age or older, and I know John can get much more specific, if there's a disability or if you're a military vet outside of that 65-years-old age group, council has the option to defer that assessment payment on that property to a point of sale. So I know that there are, there is a resident who has come forward from Bud Avenue, this is certainly something we don't have to make a decision on tonight by any stretch, as we're not making a decision on any assessment, but is asked to defer the assessments being paid until the point of sale of that property. That by Minnesota state statute is permissible, but it is up to council to decide whether you would like to enact that or not, so that is another, another topic to just think about moving forward.
So the homeowners would come to staff, then you would come back to council on our meeting on the 25th, and we would decide then?
Yep, we can talk about it then, we could certainly, I mean, if, if it was specific to this topic alone, I mean, you could discuss it as a direction at a workshop, as long as we're not making a decision, but just understand the statute, that's permissible, otherwise certainly, we can always do it here, too, as well, either way.
Okay. All right, thank you.